At this time, I will call to order this called work session meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for August the 31st, 2021 at 5:10 PM. We have no speakers this evening for our open forum for agenda items, so we will move on on our agenda for our discussion item. Strategic Plan Development. Dr. Kabatson.
Thank you President Mason. This evening, we launched the beginning of what will be a wonderful, I think, journey for us. And that is our strategic plan development. So first start with introductions and I'll come back and say a few words as well.
Okay.
Please.
I'm Shannon Burke and I'm the CEO and founder of Engage to Learn and we're so honored to be partners in Arlington, NY. And we're really excited to help facilitate this strategic plan engagement community and think about the next five years.
And I'm Lyssie Richardson and I'm an Executive Director of Partner Success and Arlington is the project that I get to run. So it's really centered here.
Very good.
Aaron Rice, School Board Trustee since 2009. You very well, Shannon. Thanks for all the work and looking forward to the third strategic plan for our district.
Stephen Wertz, two pandemic officers. See y'all again.
I'm Sarah McMurro. I'm a School Board Trustee and I'm a first-timer. This is my first strategic plan, so thank you.
Hey, I'm Anita Foster. Do you all assume, so it's nice to meet you. Marketing and Communications.
Kishan May is currently President for the School Board. It's good to see y'all here again. Excited to hear what you have to say just from your past presentations.
David Wilbanks, Trustee. And this is, I'm a first-timer too with this organization, so.
I'm Tracy Brown, Chief Schools Officer for the City.
In person. Yes.
Hey, Bowie Hogg. And then we're on with Dr. Rice, who's a trustee on board. And I guess it's our third one since 2009.
Pretty good. So.
Oh, how I changed.
Yeah, that's right. So just a few comments and visit with President Mason about this earlier today, but this is really one of those opportunities that don't come around very often. As Dr. Rice and Mr. Hogg have said, you know, this is our third. And so it really, every five years, we have an opportunity to reframe, recast, and have an aspirational opportunity in our district. And I think now more than ever, even in the previous ones, it's important for us to look to the future. We've dealt with the last year and a half and continue today to deal with very tactical actions and decisions, very much so operational, except very important for the safety of our students. But I also think it's a time we can kind of get to the big picture, to cast our work for the next five years. And every time we've done it, and we've done it twice, it has led to transformation in the district. And so that's why the work is so important. And it leads to transformation because of the commitment. And this is an opportunity to engage our stakeholders, engage our community, engage our students, engage our staff and the board to really set a kind of a direction for the next five years. As we all know, there's things that we, in any organization, that needs to be done better and deepen the work. So not all of it is new and this and this, but we also know there are things that we must continue to change and adapt to the needs of our students. So as challenging as it may seem right now to kind of lift up and look into the future, it's really our task and our challenge. So tonight, we're not writing our strategic plan, just to be clear. So because if we get real, and I do too, so I get carried away too. But we get real energized about what we're talking about and just know that this is a calibration, which is why there's only selected team members here. Ms. Moss could not be here tonight, but she would have been. So the chiefs of our school and Anita as well with the communication that needs to happen with this plan. So this is just the beginning. It's a calibration opportunity for us, for the board. And really, one of the things we want to make sure we solidify is the role and involvement of the board in these different steps, because we've done it different ways both times. And here it is a third way opportunity. But there are opportunities to have input and things like that. So I'm excited about this opportunity and I think it's exciting for our district because every time, like I said, we've done it, it leads to change and really positive things for our community. So with that, Shannon, I'll turn it over back to you.
That's great. Well, thank you for your comments. And yes, I'm very relieved to know that we're not writing the plan tonight.
I need to close.
We're not prepared for us to do that, but we do have a very engaging process because we believe that, you know, all the decisions are made in the context of community and it's a symbiotic relationship. And so giving people a proactive opportunity to engage in a process is really important. And there are a lot of reactive engagements, you know, where folks have, they need to come and share with the board, et cetera. This is a proactive opportunity to engage folks in the process as well. So tonight, we are going to work in teams. So you're kind of going to be in teams of three essentially. You'll, basically, we'll do an overview of what the process is going to look like and the roles. And like I said, and then we're going to do a little bit of immersive experience. So part of the process is going to be doing focus groups. We're actually going to kind of get your input as a focus group tonight as well. And so you'll essentially experience some of what the stakeholders will experience as they live through the process during the night. And that's really what we've got for the season. So we'll share the days and all the information we've seen. Thank you for everything you did to get us all set up. We appreciate you, Lyssie. You're amazing. And Lyssie as well. And Stephen, I've been working a lot on getting ready for today. I think Tracy's been involved as well in the process. So I know that you have a lot that you are already doing in Arlington. And one of the reasons that we are excited to partner with you is to make sure that you customize the process, that, you know, there's no reason to start over. But it is important to engage folks in the current context and say, okay, now what else, you know, and look forward to it. It's kind of a brain for this. So we're going to start, well, actually, let's go back. There is a, there's a place to sign in. And there's also, if you wanted to do this digitally, which I see some of you have devices, there's also your digital agenda as well as the one online. It's just that short. If you put the short link in your browser, you can get to the agenda digitally if you choose to do that. We also have them in the folder, so you can have your choice of modes that you want to operate this tonight. And then, so we'll essentially, well, you know, I think most of you know our organization. I'll just say a couple of things about that. We've been working in Texas for about 10 years. So yeah, so we've been working in Texas for about 10 or 11 years, but every person in our organization is a previous Texas educator. And so this is where we're kind of born and bred. We work in other states now as well. And we've worked with about 275 districts. Our goal as a mission as an organization is to help make sure that the neighborhood public schools and restaurants are every family. We know that families have choices and we want them to choose their neighborhood public school because some families don't have choices and some kids don't have choices. They don't have a way to get to certain schools that may be a choice for them. So we want the neighborhood public school to be that first choice. And we'd like to partner with districts to do that. So we go through, we do design work like this. And we also do implementation, of course, which we're helping you guys with with some of your goals for the next few years. So we have a large team that helps with all that. We're starting a year, y'all with 120 employees. So crazy. So we've grown a lot over the past 10 years and we're thankful to be working as your partner. We talked about the outcomes, you know, your teams. These are just easy norms, but one thing I want to say about the norms for tonight is just take care of yourself. We won't like take a formal break where we all get up and go to the restroom. It doesn't make sense to all go at the same time. So, you know, if you need to get up and go do something, please feel free. Don't wait for, you know, some big break. And then what we're going to do now, before we get started with anything else, is just go through a teaming process. So with the three of you, you're essentially going to, when your team come up with, what is your team name going to be? What are their roles going to be? There's five roles and three people, so that means a couple of people have to have one role. And you can see what they are. Team leader, who kind of facilitates communications, time manager, resource, techy. And then come up with your own team norms, how you're going to work together. Okay? So let's see, somebody just jump out there and be the time manager right off the bat. And we're going to take, let's do seven minutes to do team. Team name, team role, team loss.
I'll just challenge. Okay.
Seven minutes.
Okay.
Team name, team loss.
Roger, Roger.
I can tell. I can handle that.
This is starting now. Seven timer for seven.
Yeah.
Need someone that's going to record.
Team.
You went on that show.
This is your show. How are you guys doing?
Team to record.
Is there a name that you want to?
Yeah.
How about the Avengers?
Avengers.
So I kind of. And so I was on my deathbed.
Did you know the name of the folder?
Pretty bad, I know. I worried that without bringing my.
Because it was.
Oh, are you kidding? Oh, it's. Oh, wait, no.
So that should mean that.
I was. Oh, it says I should block.
Actually. After seven, it's got the. Next gate decision.
I'm going to give you a ride somewhere.
Purposeful?
Purposeful.
Purposeful.
I guess. Ours. Go down everybody.
I'm happy to support that.
Three roles, right?
So I only have one. Something that I thought I planned to do and checking with the resource.
I can just do that. Better than trying.
Stephen, refresh.
Purposeful actions. Team. Can we do an act?
We can all bring.
That's our creative work. That's our creative work for today.
I think we did the eighteen minus four.
Yeah.
Did you go eight?
Team.
We are. I got it made in the top of two minutes.
I'll take one. I'll have a little bite. And then so good.
Don't forget team member. He's eating a Mexican burger or a snack.
Okay, then we have to. These are resource.
I know.
Getting the.
The sound of team roles.
Oh, yeah.
Kishan's.
Well, determined.
He's just.
You have to tell yourself. I don't.
I have a Twitter.
Okay.
I really.
I actually took the social.
Yeah, I can.
I'm not.
I just take. That's the place. Have enough people for that. I'll do that.
I don't have to worry about that.
The norm.
I think our team norms.
What did you?
Falling apart.
No, running out of orders.
No, that's not a good.
Was it? Do you want me to write these down? Oh, perfect. Okay. So it's all just.
Out of time. Out of time and I'll be timed.
Then I'll do, Kishan, what are you going to do?
Kishan's the.
Everyone.
And so I'll do resource walking around.
Sometimes you get large.
Some of them are more.
That is going to.
For the techy.
I'm not a, I'm not a New York. He's already. But she's. She always does. I think two. I absolutely like that one.
Keep the long.
So we have a minute. I have a minute.
Maybe. No. It's just. I don't think it's part of this process, but I really want to think. Oh, she.
Yeah, she.
And her sex towards. We are. With everything that we are discussing, check it off. Does this, does this push us up? This is a stretch. I mean, not everything is correct.
Yes. Big. That's what we're here.
That is for. And then the.
I think for me.
It's a seventeen mark.
Let me look. I feel like. That's not.
Would that.
Your.
Oh, I like that.
Yeah.
There are places to be.
Yeah.
That's me. Yes. Okay, thirty seconds.
I think ours should also be. What do we know? Those words. Yes.
I.
We have a team. Do you look for it? What is all, which one is all going to do? What's he's ever?
We're team one.
What are y'all? We make sure.
Team one.
I want to hear what Amy all came up with.
Oh.
Just.
I can't wait.
Just.
See, y'all have the unfair advantage. You've got the.
It was your idea, wasn't it?
Well, that's not giving us any credit. We were actually trying to create something. Kishan's reporting, so. We're going to take full credit for it.
Okay. So let's hear from team two, because I think you're very proud of your team names. Your team name and if there's any norms that you feel that the whole group would benefit from.
So yes, we are team two and we are very proud to be in team two and to be together and we're proud of our name. We are called Team PALS, P-A-L-S, Purposeful Actions Leads to Success.
Oh, wow. Nice. Oh, my goodness. Y'all have a very high standard. Now, now the trend was trying to change.
Wait, what did you say? We're high social.
Oh, my goodness.
I should be.
It was so good.
PALS were PALS, where purposeful action leads to success.
Nice. Yes. Impressive. Did y'all also hear their team name? Because you have to be impressed by it. Okay.
I didn't hear. We were.
I'm not finished.
Our team name, we're not going to pay attention half the time.
I'm going to have to get. Somebody else just has to stay.
We heard, we heard, oh, we talked to all of us. We heard y'all.
Oh, you heard pals.
Heard y'all.
Tracy, you need to keep him on test.
It's like I'm lost.
Okay, team one, what is your team name and any norms?
We are the, we are the Achievement Avengers.
Oh, wow.
That was Dr. Rice's.
You gave good.
And I did.
Guys like this is. If people like it, you win.
Okay, so, so Ms. McMurro is no longer our communications.
Am I supposed to keep going? Do we have to read our norms?
If there's norms that you feel would benefit the group.
We are very proud of our norms. Thank you. We want to respect the thoughts and views of each other. Seek first to understand. Let all of us to lend our voice to the process and encourage innovation.
Awesome. Those are great norms. Achievement Avengers.
Hey, hey.
We are. I'm supposed to be the team two. We're actually team three.
You're actually team three.
I've got that problem on my notes there. Good, maybe you'll take notes for us, so don't worry. We are team GPS. The geek planning squad.
Oh.
All three of us really enjoy strategic planning and love doing. Tracy will be our team leader. David will be our time manager and I will be handling our communication. We haven't figured out resource manager on that yet. And then we, it took a while, so we're still working on our team.
We were team norms.
We're about direction. We want to say focus on our direction and make sure we come out with a long.
Beautiful.
GPS.
GPS, direction.
All about direction.
Yeah, it's got a double meaning. Yeah. I'll just have to say, these are better two names than I expected.
I'm not sure that's a compliment or not. It's always going to lower expectations.
So we're going to do just a little bit of table talk. I heard some of you already starting this a little bit, but your expectations for today, we kind of discussed a little bit, but why do you do what you do? And you all have different roles and it's kind of nice to be interacting with each other and thinking about this. But what is your why for your work and what is your hope for this work? So I know GPS loves strategic planning. What are you hoping is going to come out of it? So that's the table talk, time managers for all three questions for your team. Let's, let's say, let's do six minutes on this. I think that's, that's two minutes for each question, so that's two of four. Okay, go.
I think our.
So.
First one. Expectations for our time together is a good preparation. Sharing calibration for with that.
Here, you want kids. Here's the. What is the. Oh, that's. The expectations that we all, seeing this isn't where we're getting into the weeds and truly developing plans, that we all agree to, I guess, the foundation. Our strategy.
You said something. Well, you do. No, I lost it. What you said about. The media. They accept.
Oh, it's a challenge.
Yeah, I think it's good.
And I just.
What do you expect?
I think that this is really. The.
That's your hope for this.
And what else?
The journey.
Is.
Good.
And.
So do you have different expectations?
No, I don't have different expectations. I would probably say something similar to what we're saying. Maybe. Way, but it's basically thinking just have some calibration across the group. Or set some calibration across the group about what we're. And the reason I said I don't need is because it affects that team personnel thing. If you only have a finite amount of people and a finite number of. What's going to give you the faith? Oh. And how we spend all of our time around those few things rather than trying to create the, I call the teeth, take back. It looks great on paper, but in partality, it's not really.
I mean, this is all very.
It would be so, for me, like if that's. We all walk away. Try to accomplish that would be possible. I think at least my thinking is that was.
Yeah, definitely. I look at the. The progression that we had with strategic planning. It's our first one, staff, who was very much like them. These kids under menu, but they kind of have to be. Yeah. But then with the last one, it was more refined and performance objectives.
Still think about like eight years ago. I left it right after.
Spoke. Everybody spoke. It's there.
Specialized program. Really qualified. There were, there was no, it was. Like.
Yes, and that's so interesting. That is when I started as a faculty teacher. And just through nineteen.
That's hard.
Just in that short ten years.
And it was easy to say it's purposeful. A big culture shift. If you weren't prepared for that, basically a lot of push that.
My wife.
The cool thing now is though. Place now we're. Now we can.
Need to prioritize because the foundation.
As the core.
Well, why?
The expectations.
What's the why?
Today. Something like kids. When I went to the people is. Many parties maybe at a. Maybe that's clarity. Remember when I think about that, she's like. But it's because I, it's because I wasn't.
Well. We need. Which gets them.
I could tell you an algebra two equation I used in my daily life. I learned how to think in that class. Also, in my mind, like when I think about this, I think about my own. I can give them. To be successful, other tools to know where they want to go. Think about things. Challenge problems, actually like accumulate information, make decisions as like a human being, thinks about things. Maybe if you can walk with kids that can do those kinds of things, then I think it's a good job. Because it doesn't really matter.
We have.
They like to challenge the team or. Those soft skills. To me, that's the big one. And who you are, right?
Yeah.
You can learn how to like go anywhere, whether it be law or university and read something, not just to get the face value, but actually ask questions. Then you're actually going to make a site if you.
I absolutely agree. For me, that line is completely. This work is, when we get out of this strategic plan, this process gives that balance of that's really what I'm in it for. But we are judged by this capillaries, just how to not make that a distraction to that, that you said.
You do that little wellness.
Exactly.
Yeah. If you're. Kids talking.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I. It's like someone's team and it's a process.
Yeah. So, that. Yeah, that's. So, it's that alignment.
It was for the exterior.
It was probably. Yeah. What has to do?
Good question. Right on time. We didn't just talk about number three, though. Is that okay?
It's not a lack of work, really.
Okay.
Are you open? Yes.
Okay, so let's hear, really, let's just get to maybe communications or delegate. You can delegate your communications role. And let's hear one thing that you talked about that you hoped for this work. Well, actually, let's do this. One expectation that your group talked about for today, and then one thing that you hope for this work. So, who would like to start?
Well, good.
Okay, GPS?
Yeah, we, we wouldn't say, are we on the right roadmap and what are our clear expectations?
Okay.
From what we're going to accomplish and where we're going to go.
Perfect.
Did roadmap and then where are we coming?
Yeah. She's on your team over there. She has taught you guys.
It's all aligned, yeah. It's all aligned. It's great. Love it. Achievement Avengers.
Oh, okay. So, we, we talked about a lot, but one thing, um, that I just wanted to throw out there, um, I thought was really strong. Dr. Wertz mentioned how we need to calibrate on priorities. Instead of, you know, going a mile wide and just an inch deep with all of these components of a strategic plan. And he, he compared it to the Cheesecake Factory menu. It's just endless, right? Let's zoom in on the priorities and then really go deeply with those. So we can truly take flight with this strategic plan.
So, um, our expectation together today is to make sure that all of our pals in the room understand the direction that we are all going in. And our hope is that for our pals, that everybody within the district sees themselves as part of it and part of their success for our students.
Y'all are just saying on the, it's awesome. Because our pals, they're going, they've got the direction. I like how competitive the group is.
I see what you're doing.
Awesome. So, um, I really like how y'all, you know, you're talking about transformation, but then also, in a way, you know, efficiency. That's another, that's another thing that comes out of strategic planning, right? Is efficiency. So that's another, um, hope for the work. Uh, I mentioned already, we're at a team night. I think that's all. But we're gonna, our next, the next piece is just to look at again what you have in place now. These are things that don't need to change, um, even though this is your third planning process. There's no reason to go back and, you know, vision, mission. Some of these things should stay the same. And then really, the way you get there is what kind of changes. So, you have, um, one of the things I remember when I first got to know this district, I loved reading about the one hundred percent.
The Avengers are ready.
Now they have, okay, they, yeah. Yeah, yeah, there you go. Sorry, are you happy?
Oh, I.
Sorry, I asked you for a review.
That is great.
I think it's the working.
Yeah, that's right. So, one of the things that I loved about this district from the very beginning is the goal of one hundred percent. That AIS students will graduate exceptionally prepared for college career and citizenship. It's such a great, succinct, precise, but ambitious, um, um, goal, and I, I just have loved that. And so anyways, all I have to say, these vision, mission, and goal piece of this is, we're not trying to renew that in this process. So just to be clear. Um, but what we do want to do is do a little bit of analysis of that right now, just as we're thinking about the planning process. It should, whatever comes out of the planning process should still align to these three components that you already have in place. So you're going to, as a team, essentially do a little analysis, essentially look at those through, talk about what do they mean to you? Um, you know, what resonates with you about these, et cetera? And, um, there's a workspace for that that kind of has you say, like, it is about this, it is not about this. So you're going to go through that analysis. And then you had, um, in the district, you've really been focused on kind of three areas over these past, um, few years. And so these three areas are, there's a lot of work going, happening in the district already around the learner experience, around this growth and development of people, including, you know, leadership throughout the district, and then your college and career ready focus. So, those, again, don't, those are very valid, valuable pieces. They don't necessarily need to change through this process. You might have some new ideas for them. You might have some things happen. You might also have some things that you decide to strategically abandon around those things or other things. But it's important to just, as a frame, again, for what we're going to do, think about those three areas and how those are already aligned to your vision, mission, and goal. So this is kind of a level-setting piece of the process before we go into more about what's the rest of the process going to look like. So, timekeepers, once again, let's take, I think this probably, uh, I think we could probably do this one in five minutes. I'm just backing up next. So five minutes for this process, and you have a workspace, either digital or in the folder, um, that you can use to accomplish this. All right?
Okay. Secretary. It seems like more than five minutes. So I'll, I'll start, um, vision, mission, goals.
So, to me, the, the mission is about.
It's definitely about leading, touching every child.
But the mission goal, it is.
Being unforgiving on making sure they have the access and opportunity more, their highest potential.
Can we change unforgiving to?
Yeah, it's just kind of. But I guess I'll say, it is. So it's about.
So it's about. And I guess the vision.
It's not about the recognition. So the mission is about, uh, achievement that we were posting about for a run of years. As, oh, that's what you hear about the one labels. No, it was validation for me from outside of our district that we were on the right track. So, to me, that's what it's not about. And it's not about, it's not about. Yeah, I guess it's about micromanaging the first, first template process. Uh, making that is, that's a good failure potentially. Uh, but at the same time, it is about what we're making irrelevant and, uh, helping every single student. The, the education, the opportunity, the access to that opportunity, basically.
To me, it's about.
So, I, the only other thing is, we're there on the goal.
Right, we can certainly compare.
Contribute. It's, it's not about, um, it's not about giving. Because that's, yeah, like, everything that says very focused on skills.
It's a way, the way I think about it.
Yeah, I know.
The computer says. Yeah, because when you're not, isn't that funny? I know. Okay, so you, you really got the goal, and now I'm like, what am I going to say? So, it's about the whole child, right? Because we're thinking about, kind of what you were talking about, like, learning opportunities. If we're really wanting to empower.
Expectations.
It's not just about the goal, it's being the outcome. It's about how we got them to. So, it's about the whole child. It's about striving towards the goal. It's what we need to do. I'm glad. Until we achieve, like, one of them, or three of them, why we don't change our goal. I can't think of.
It's not about. It's code cutter, but that's not missing that.
We, we want to think about our vision, mission, and goal is really.
Self shooters.
It's maybe that that word's relevant, so really, everyone, type, type of mission in terms of the learning experience. I think it's, um, if we're really on a mission.
It's not, I guess, right, it's not about.
It's life. The passing of the now. You can't think, it doesn't actually happen to me. We, we can teach your content.
No, I'm just saying.
Yes, you could be a genius in that.
Well, it's not.
So that's one thing. And the other thing, too, is I always think of the, when we were, like, analyzing the goal, several years ago, to start our whole report. It's the goal, I, this, this is a lot of, this is around this idea of what's needed. It doesn't matter what background is, who you are, what, what you come with in your backpack or what you don't. You're in the, you're on the team that we're committed to. And to me, like, that's, that's a really good statement for today. A hundred percent are going to be exceptionally prepared, because we'll have to spend some time breaking down what exactly their needs.
Yeah.
And so, for me, that's where the relevant is in, and the rigorous part is in. To me, those are.
So, yeah, include intentional equity, those are the two key words.
Yeah. And I think it is.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to the. Yeah, that.
About the same, I think this is, I would say, just because it's late saying we're kind of a premier district, that doesn't mean that we don't want everyone to, right, and to, and to, and to.
We don't need the expectations, like you said.
Yes. Because to me, like, what you, it's, you know, we don't have to, we're, we're single thing. We're not trying to, we might think about that. The percentage of students who are likely to be engaged in some special like. Right.
I don't really think that it's, it's not about the.
So, at what point do you wrap the fence around? So, the question, uh, is one of the, the plot, I know, is it's not necessarily being a premier district. Doesn't mean that you're a smorgasbord of everything there is. You still have to have, like, your, as we said earlier, your specialty, what you're known for, or whatever.
This is future, it's just. It's not about. See, it's smorgasbord.
Yeah, we're not, we're not. Sarah follows on this next question, are, how each of those three, you know, by your goals or your.
Okay.
Thinking of strategic plans.
Wow, separating it out like that.
What do we need to focus on?
The learner experience, how is that connected? Our mission, mission. Well, we talk about their experience.
You're not being certain.
Did we get them engaged? Did we keep them engaged? You know?
Well, think about the mission, the whole mission statement focuses on that. It basically, to me, the mission statement articulates exactly what the learner experience is supposed to be.
Yeah.
It's relevant, innovative. So, well, our task has always had to be, is like, well, what is that actually? But for me, I feel like that's one of the things that other people don't know or adopted is, it's really crisp about what's. What's your feeling every day of this?
Yeah.
Trying to get that, so, it's good, achieve their energy. Okay, what about? And I think over the years, we have discovered and defined capacity, growth, staff, leadership, growth, and development. Everybody in the organization is what helps. It is inherent.
With college, we're already.
But we lost enough in our first, we told the board, uh, uh, all the disclosure. But I think that has shown itself.
Give your destination in years.
To have the, to have the years, to focus how appropriately on the data, and stop looking at it as they march. And not only looking at that, but taking in the whole class and the whole child. And it's, it's remarkable to see the progression.
The other thing about it, too, is thinking about a premier district.
Yes.
Yes, it's an organization, it teaches kids, but it's still an employer.
Right.
Because you want to be a premier employer, you should have the. Just stick around and make it like there's nowhere to grow. It's not going to be the same thing.
Absolutely. We all have.
It's actually a simple. I mean, you're actually. I mean, but then it's also a sort of culture. But my, I think, by the way, it's better. By intentionally growing, well, training.
To me, actually, college and career rate, the conversation is kind of the hardest to define of these pillars. To me, it's a difference. But I think what you can probably articulate this much better than I can. When I think college and career rate, I know we're looking at it in organization-wide, you know, pre-K, for 12th grade. But my brain thinks high school. And I know that's not true. I know we put things in place, but to me, it's essential that we're looking at also literally from the pre-K level on, what's what those foundational blocks are to make them be able to launch for success.
I think too, it's, um, it's because you don't feel like this.
The primary.
Does mean, you know, they're not like, they're, because if they can't do the skills that they're taught, they're not, they can't do it.
Yeah.
No, it's just like a genealog.
Yeah.
Yeah. And something else, you said, base.
For me, when I think of college and career rate, it's a case of part of the.
It's how you're.
I don't want the I C to be the reason you couldn't do it.
That's right.
Okay, team leaders. In one more minute, can you, with your team, decide one comment to share that really resonated with you from your discussion? These were really rich discussions. Um, is there, one, one comment would you all agree on that you want to share with the group that kind of came out as an ahah of your conversation? Take a minute to think about that.
I was listening. I was listening, and I was probably saying, how do we tie Avengers to different?
Okay, pals, are you ready?
We are.
Yes. Okay, sure. Would you like to share?
So, um, the learner experience pillar, um, some of the description that we had was that, that really is, is the how-to. It's about the culture that's created in the classroom, started in the classroom, not just from the top down, but in the classroom itself. Leads to successful learner experience.
That is really good. Yeah, and the culture of that classroom being the foundation of this, instead of, like you say, top down, that's, that's excellent. Pals, pals. It's a pals culture.
So lucky.
She just said it at the end. GPS, what did, what was your?
Team? G.
P.
S. Tracy's going to report on more on this.
They're going to cheer now.
Or Tracy or the P is going to report on.
So, a question on our direction that our vision, mission, and goals provide us, we focus on the learner experience as well. And we talked about the learner experience, we can accomplish our goal, um, through ensuring equity, rigorous enrollment instruction, and then a suited center approach.
And we talked about the learner experience, we can accomplish our goal through ensuring equity, rigorous enrollment instruction, and that it's a suited centered approach to the learner experience.
Great. Awesome. So really equity is, is clear in each piece of this, right? The first, the first piece with the learner experience is for all learners. The second piece with the, with the adults essentially assisting as well. So yeah, love that. And then that, um, is again, that bridge and that foundation. And you, you have gone through the process of developing that learner profile in the past. So that'll be another bedrock of your plan. You don't need to recreate that, um, at this point. Um, and you've gone through the process of creating what the learner experience looks like. And then it's, it's execution of that. To get to equity, it's execution of that, right? So, yeah, that's great. Great, thank you, team G P S, everyone else, now you will have to come up with a cheer for the next round. Um, okay. Achievers Avengers.
Not all districts would be able to achieve or even dare to dream achieving the goal of one hundred percent of A I C students graduating exceptionally prepared. But we see the signal in the distance. And we are ready as the achievement Avengers to rise to the top. And what it will take is developing the whole child and making sure that each of them with their differing journeys are able to go toward that life.
Love it. Now you have to have a skit. Your presentation as well.
Theater cheer.
The theater team.
I think you need to make that point again, and we all need to.
I kind of came up with that as I was. But the whole child, the whole child, I mean, to me, the mission, vision and goal, we talked about how all three of those, it really comes back to the whole child and how, how they reach this will look different. And we need to honor that and foster that. And back to equity, we talked about the same thing, that will be different for every, every learner.
Love it. It's like, yeah, and you did get busy.
I did. She put something up there, like I turned around, so I felt it. Great performance. Eight plus in my book.
Awesome. Love it. So it's really, um, this whole process, we do follow a, a process of backwards design. So what we've been doing right now is thinking about where do you want to be, you know, that, that hundred percent. And that really is true. And that was one of the reasons why I love, again, when I saw that goal, it's like, yeah, put it out there a hundred percent, you know? A hundred percent, you know, achieve it. And so that, that, you already have these pieces in place that in a way are kind of your North Star, like this is where we're going. Um, and this whole process is, is a backwards design process. So it's, uh, there's lots of different types of planning. The strategic planning that we practice is specifically set the, set the bar where you're trying to get to, doing the app analysis and then, and then, um, that helps you decide what you're going to be good there. So, um, that's how those processes work. You'll see that identifying where to decide results, determining, okay, what would show us that we're on that path and we're making progress. And then you plan the experience around that. So the other thing in, in this group, team G P S, um, shared the learner centered, um, learning experience, and this is a very student focused design process. So, you know, we will want to have student voice, we'll have student focus groups, we'll have, you know, ideally, hopefully, students at the summit, not around where you do.
Yes.
At the summit, so hear from the students at the summit. I know that Dr. Cavassos, you are big on the student voice as well, and, and, um, we've had some other experiences with you all where we had the student voice there. Um, and so that piece is critical, we'll have some students on the design team. It's a, it's a hallmark of the way that we work as a age to learn to make sure that you have student voice as part of the process, which helps you keep a student focused, learner centered process. Um, community based means you're inviting, we're not writing it tonight behind closed doors. Um, you're, you know, you're inviting the community into being part of the process, um, to make sure that we have the alignment, we're using, um, design thinking, backwards design. When we finish with it, it should be very actionable. It's, you know, it's one of those things that when you see what's there, it's like, oh yeah, we can, this is exactly what we're supposed to do. And I know you all got through processes before, so that's helpful. This is kind of the way that we frame it. So just sharing a little of our design model and process, we have kind of essentially, um, a few stages to it. So the first one is engaging folks, and that, that'll kind of be the beginning. It's like the big funnel at the beginning, you know, the top of the funnel where you're engaging and getting input, um, starting tonight. We'll go through a design process, which is a two day, um, piece where you kind of design the framework around that. Um, again, built on the foundation that you already have. All of this will be kind of framed with the vision for learning at the center of it, so that gets shared with folks that are even designing or creating. And then eventually, um, you'll end up with a create and leave portion, which means that you'll have a, a three to five year timer. We don't do everything in the first year, um, timeline it out. And actually, I think we helped you all with a timeline for your last strategic plan. Um, you had gone through the process, but then we did work with you to help timeline that out. Um, and then you'll have, you know, at least the year one of these are the action plans that were, that we're going to implement in year one, and you'll come back to the action planning. And, and subsequent years. Time frame, we are starting here in September, and, and by the way, you have a document. If you want to look at the actual dates, as I'm sharing that with you, there's a document linked to your agenda called the overview of planning.
Yeah, it's also in your folder too, it's at the very back.
That'd be the easiest place.
Silver folder.
It says overview of planning, it's got a date on it. It's a landscaped document, and that might be the easiest place to look at the dates. So essentially, um, we run a pretty tight, um, process in terms of time. Um, because we just found that you can keep your momentum, there's no reason to drag it all out, and you keep your momentum. And, um, so our goal from a backwards design standpoint is to be able to bring the finished product back to the board in December. That's what we're shooting for, um, that's our goal. So backing that up, we're going to start that engage process here in a couple of weeks, uh, with some focus groups and summits. You'll see those are happening in September as long, along with the survey to gather data and input in three different ways so we can try and evaluate it. So we'll give, focus groups are a, um, essentially an invited opportunity. And so there will be homogeneous invited groups. So that'll be, you know, secondary students, um, you know, secondary parents, elementary teachers, like in homogeneous groups. And invite them, and you'll see the questions and go through the process tonight that they'll go through, essentially. The summits are open forum, essentially, so anyone can participate. Um, and I know he is going to communicate those out far and wide, and we're going to get all kinds of folks, um, participating in that. And then, um, the survey is obviously also an open, um, opportunity. So you get that data and you're able to try and evaluate that and then share it with the design team so that you have, um, uh, a basis of, of input to be able to make decisions on. The design team, I want to say the fourteenth, no, the twelfth, thirteenth of October. So that's kind of a pivot point in the process, that you have this engagement, then we'll do the design team. So that's two days in a row of really kind of creating the foundation for the rest of the planning process. Then that's followed by two more days, um, with the create team to come up with specific results, actions and timeline that. And then, um, in the lead process, we'll create the action plans for year one, that you're, you should be finished by that time of November, so we can take it, bring it back to you in December. Okay, so that. And as you can see, you have the actual dates. And then, um, I think the next piece is just to think through and talk about for a minute, the role of the board in the process. So, um, tonight, obviously, it's kind of like, um, when we were talking about Dr. Cavassos, I said, I think you said, like, it's like bookends to the process as part of it, and then rotating through. So tonight being the beginning, kind of the launch of the whole thing, and then December being the approval piece. Um, but, but maybe one of the most important roles is because people look to you, um, to invite people to attend and participate so that they understand, yes, we really want your input, we really want you to be a part of this process.
Can I break it down a bit here? So the, the design, create and lead teams is where they rotate, the three board members or two board members. It can be, like, if you have a committee structure to rotate through that. Or it can be, you sign up for it. But it probably is better to rotate so that it's clear who should be there and, you know, who, who will be there.
Yeah.
Any questions specifically about the process? This, this is a, one of those points that we want to make sure we're on the same page of how this unfolds. Before the questions, maybe Shannon, can you explain a little bit on the design team? Because isn't that the big work? So just explain a little bit about how that, what that team is, um, supposed to focus on.
Okay, sure. So the design team, and that's the two days that I mentioned, I think, um, is the twelfth and thirteenth of October. Um, the design team is a team that is essentially comprised of a very, a microcosm of your community, essentially. So it is representative of every aspect of your community. Um, and that's, um, it's so, it's invited, this isn't voluntary, it's invited. But, I mean, it is voluntary, but it's selected to make sure that every aspect of your community is represented in the design team in some way. And that group comes together, and the reason that we do that that way is because what we've learned is that to have an actionable plan, you actually have to, um, essentially anchor in community. Um, and so that, that's what happens there, because basically, actions, uh, result from a foundation of beliefs. So if people haven't been involved in designing it, and you don't have that representative, um, group there, then we, we, we like to say, we, we don't talk about buy-in because we're not trying to sell anybody anything. But it's really important to get everyone's input and representative input so that you're making the best decisions that are actionable. So during that time, during those two days, essentially, that team is responsible for processing, um, all of the input from the community that's already been shared, all of the work to date, like you did tonight, some of the pieces that are already in place. Processing all of that and then coming out with, okay, what are the key strategies that are, we're going to move forward with? Um, and, and it's a lot of sorting and filtering and alignment, making sure that what we come up with as strategies are very aligned to this foundation that we already put in place. So coming out with key strategies and action ideas, they're not formulated out into action plans, but action ideas, they come from that team. So when you leave that session, it's essentially, here's the, here's the bedrock foundation, here's all the input from the community, here's the key strategies, and then here are the action ideas that can, can move forward to the create team. The create team takes that essentially, and then, again, timelines, the action ideas comes up with specific results, these are the things that are going to happen each year, essentially. And then the lead team is the one that comes up with the action plans for year one. So the, the foundation is that strategy piece that comes out of the design team.
Perfect. Questions, questions about the process or thoughts or comments?
So my question is more on getting stakeholder, community input, uh, making sure that that is truly representative of all of our stakeholder groups, uh, to infuse that, that equity into it.
Yes.
Obviously, we, we can work our own channels as trustees, but I guess from the district standpoint, how, how is that going to be sourced out to make sure that we've got everybody covered?
I can speak to that. Um, I have assembled a, a committee of about fifty people. Um, they have not received the invites until, we're waiting for tonight. But basically, we're going to be inviting someone from the, um, the Arlington Chamber of Commerce, with someone from the Latino Business Advisory Council, someone from the G A C C Partners in Education Committee, um, someone from the L, the L K Advancing Group Committee, um, someone, um, from Tarrant County Asian American Chamber of Commerce, um, a representative from the F F C Committee, a representative from the C B O C. So we tried to find, uh, at least general representation, sorry to speak to one side of the room, I was looking at my computer. We're trying to, um, we, we tried to find at least someone to represent different segments of the, of the community that interact with Arlington in significant ways, um, and find at least one rep. Um, we do, we are trying to keep the committee to a, a reasonable size because you're actually working and designing with each other. Um, but we wanted to make sure that those people were, that there are people from those organizations that can be included. We also have, um, students, we have members, that we have parents that we've invited, that will be invited, that are part of like the, the council of P T A, um, people that are serving different levels of the organization, like early childhood, elementary and high school. Uh, we also have teachers and principals, and then we have members of different, members of district staff that are from around the system, and then a few members of senior staff there. So we tried to be as comprehensive as possible. Um, but like I said, we haven't sent out any invites until after tonight, in case you want to make a recommendation, Dr. Cavassos, that's someone specifically part of it.
And this is where the three board members or two, uh, who want to wrap it up, will rotate through some of these teams. So it's, it's almost like a bond planning, you know, um, capital needs steering committee, but more, I think, more representative, but where you are part of that, but you're a team member there with them.
Right, so we'll.
That's a big distinction I think Shannon makes is that.
Yes.
You, you want to be a team member there, not kind of set, steering them a certain way, right?
Yes, thank you for saying that, because you can hear this, this group, and, and when you hear all of the different folks that Stephen's saying there, it's like, wow, that's going to be really powerful. And you want to make sure that you hear from everyone, right? Like, the worst thing that could happen is you have these people, you have someone like presenting to them or something. It's like, there's so much value in the voices that will be in that room. So the way that we facilitate that process is, um, essentially, you know, small group discussion, coming to a group in small groups, sharing those things with whole group and coming to a group in whole group. So everyone, like Dr. Cavassos said, you know, that's in that room is, you know, we talked about at the beginning of that time, that one of the norms is everyone has a voice, you know, whether it is a freshman in high school, or it's, you know, the mayor that's there or whatever. Um, everyone is a team member during that time and works together, um, during the process. And so it's really important to, you know, especially I think for those of you that end up being part of it that are on the board, or Dr. Cavassos, or really any senior staff, um, it, it, it really is important that you play the role of the team member because they will be looking to you. If you start to, you know, speak, you know, kind of.
Present.
Assert things, yeah, if you start to assert things, they'll, they'll really look to you and be like, okay, because they're going to, you know, trust and, and listen to you, and so it'll shut down a lot of other conversation. So, um, it's really important, um, for those of you who are the representatives, to be a team member, to encourage the other people to speak, you know, they, otherwise, it can end up feeling like, well, they already knew what they were going to do, and they just invited us in, you know, to have this conversation, but they already knew what they were going to do. So it's not that you can't have a voice there, but, um, you, you would all, I mean, I know all of, most of you, so I know you're.
Well, I agree, I think it's minimizing voice so people will listen.
Yes. Role there.
Yes.
And just as.
We try doing it on our normal committees, C B O C and, you know, it's like Ford, Ford has liaisons, but that's.
Yes, that's exactly right.
And as a reminder there Shannon, that, that the design team will have the survey information, the focus group.
Yes.
So all that focus group and the stuff that happened before, so it's a, a little like the capital needs steering, right? You have all this information, and now the design team goes through it and then sifts through it and begins to design, so yeah.
Yes, absolutely. So that's part of it, is processing, you know, basically as representatives of the community, processing the wider community input, you know, funneling that into, and creating this like kind of laser focus from analyzing the patterns and then funneling that into.
And I don't know if y'all, with Dr. Works and those, one group, when we heard the students, all that, I definitely think we need to make sure we have a specific, either focus group or team with our slab students that are official represent. And I think from last year's and this year's, because last year kind of didn't get much, uh, and so when Dr. TJ and I started working through slabs, we, we want to make sure we assign, you had these schools last year, we're going to do the same schools this year, so you can try and work with both. So I think something specific with those slabs, and maybe that's one where you do bring in all the board to work on focus with something in that nature.
Yeah, so Shannon, if you go back to the other slide.
Yes. Forward.
That could be one of the focus groups.
Right.
That's great. Oh, yeah. That would be excellent.
I don't think they should be the only student focused, but I think it does need to be one of the student.
Well, just, just for, um, a reference, it's really good comment about students, uh, and we can definitely make them one of the groups. Um, but you made a, to your point too, uh, about making sure that there's a, a cross section of the district student population.
Yes.
That have an opportunity to speak. So one of the things we've intentionally talked about is making sure that when we invite students to a focus group, that we have high achievers and under achievers. We have all sorts of students that are actually there, so that we can make sure that the voices of everyone is heard. And it's actually pretty interesting, I've been in an experience one time where teachers invited students into the planning session, and the student that spoke the most and gave the most feedback was the one that struggled the most. So it's interesting, your perspective that you actually get. So what we'll, what we'll try to do is when we, we schedule the focus groups, we'll schedule focus groups with the slab group, and then we'll also include this swath that you're kind of talking about, it has the continuum of students, students on.
I think that's really important when you have a goal for one hundred percent. I think that's really important when you have a goal for 100%-
Yep.
...of your students to achieve, like, the ones that maybe aren't right now are the ones you need to hear from the most, right? And it's like, what, what's happening, what do we need to do differently, et cetera. So really important to bring that student voice in. And it's, I, I love it, because when I facilitated these in the past, a lot of times what happens is, like, we were always talking about your role, and the, the students end up dominating, you know, a lot of times, like, they're the ones that are talking, nobody's listening to them, but it is good, because it's like what they have to say, I mean, they have, they have great insight, so it's, it's really important. What other questions would you have about process? Yes?
So Dr. Works, as far as geographically, what, what group are you looking for to make sure that there's an inclusive part of the Grand Prairie area, you know, part of these focus groups?
So I'll, I will, when we put this list together, we tried to think about where teachers and students and parents, which part of town they came from, so that everyone was represented. I didn't specifically have Grand Prairie in my mind, I'll go back, I'll notate that to go back to make sure that there's inclusion of people that specifically live outside of Arlington city boundaries, but we did try to be intentional to have students or representation from faculty that have come from the north side of town, and the south side of town, and the east and the west, that kind of thing, but I'll go back and look at city boundaries, yeah.
Okay, true.
Good comment.
Yes.
Question?
Go ahead, no, just to say any other questions, so go.
Oh, okay. Are, speaking of different groups, are elementary, junior high, and high schools, they're a pretty good mix of the different-
Yeah, so we have representation of teachers from, two from each of the three levels. We have parents from, the parent, the parent group tends to lean more towards the younger-
I was mainly thinking of personnel, because I think they'll bring different insights.
Oh, yeah, no, and we also made sure that we represented schools on the personnel side that looked different to some that were more typical schools, and some schools that were a part of the SFC network, things like that.
Awesome.
And then the same thing with high school, the same thing with principals, we made sure there's representation from the gamma, including-
Awesome.
-alternative type settings.
Because I know that it's like, when you work at a high school as an administrator versus an elementary school, it's like a different, a different universe, and I think all of that insight will be good. So forgive me if I missed something blatantly obvious, when is the actual strategic plan drafted? When, when is the document-
No, it's a good question.
Yeah, so there's, so, so part, so the first two pieces up here are the, and maybe graphically it's easier to see, those first pieces are input, so there's nothing actually, you know, that goes on the page, you know, the plan from that, but that's all input that goes into the process. In the design phase, you get the, kind of the first layer of the plan, that is the highest layer, here we go from, you know, Black Lives Design, the highest layer, which is the strategies. From the second team there, you get the next two layers, and then from the last one, you get the last layer. So by the end of that, you have a plan, but it's, it's created literally by the participants. So that is one thing that's very different from the way that we work as the age to learn, is that we facilitate the process, and we'll, we'll have our graphic designer, we'll make it look pretty and all that kind of stuff for you, but it literally gets written in these sessions by the teams. I mean, it's, so we have templates in there, it's literally being written by other people. So it's not ever, you know, they say things, and then you go back and write it, you know, it's like, you know, here, you know, it's, they're, they're literally writing through the process.
But like, will they be able, before it comes to us, will they be able to see the, you know-
Oh, like the final product altogether?
Yeah, just to make sure that, because I think it was mentioned before, we want them to know that their voice was heard, not that they were on a committee, and now we're saying, this is what we're doing, thanks for being on the committee, you know, I want them to be able to really see-
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
So, I'm kind of seeing that just a little-
Absolutely, yeah.
So as we begin each phase of the process, so after we, at the end of design, we will recap everything that was captured and agreed upon during that session, and that's how we begin the next session, right? Because there might be different representatives at the next meeting, sub-meeting dates, and so we recap all that, so this is what your colleagues and community members before you did, and now you're taking the baton and going into this section of it, and this is going to be your focus as you're writing the section of the plan. And then at the end, sometimes districts will do, and this is, this is optional, but they'll do like a preview of the plan in its entirety, right, almost like a celebration, where they say, thank you so much for your participation, and this is sort of your draft preliminary, before it goes to the board for approval-
That's it.
-as an option. And then also, as Shannon alluded to, we actually take all the components of the strategic plan, and I'll write an executive summary that captures all of the input. It will include a community engagement report that is, that actually takes all that input, and makes it easily discernible to the design team members, so it's not, they're sifting through a bunch of just raw data, but they, we actually make it very visually appealing. So that's all included, all the components, every person participating in the process name will be included, and so it's very, very nice in the end, and it actually will be like an actual planned document. And we also produce a brochure for the strategic plan with the main highlight components that you could use for communicating, and the district and things, without the executive summary and all that, just so that it's, it's easy to navigate and, and get to. So just wanted to add to that. Thank you.
So it's like a growing doctor.
Right, yes, exactly. So you'll have each piece of it, like building on the, on the pieces before we get agreement, before we go to the next one, and then, and so, yeah, it gets-
Awesome.
And, and the team members, the board can rotate or not, y'all can decide that, but the, the rest of the team members are usually staying the same over the course of that time, so they're seeing, you know, they're seeing it grow, essentially, and, and actually, and then, but, you know, hey, with the creativity in this room, we should have a part, because that's, I mean, a lot of times, that's what we do, it's like, as you said, we'll do a celebration, you know, you can have a big cake, you can, you can-
Yeah, that's awesome.
Company, all that good stuff, and then share, you know, share that.
Did you have a question?
I was just going to add on to that, with our last strategic plan, we, we did just that, we had the, the final draft preview that we did with all of our stakeholder groups, and broke them up into tables, and let them kind of look at it, and I don't think we missed anything on that one, but it was a great opportunity to have all those traditional stakeholder groups get their eyes on it, feel included in that process. I, I, I'm interested in that, I just don't know, in the timetable, is that something we can manage, that Aaron Burals can manage putting those groups together, or is there a different way to do it?
Well, I think we're talking about these groups, right? Because they're going to be doing parts.
Right.
And so what we want is these groups to come together to do what you just described. That's what, that's what you were, I don't know, that's what you're saying.
For the, the design and the create teams?
Right.
Well, I, what I was thinking of, and I think what Sarah was getting at, was bringing it back to the original, maybe focus groups, or maybe some stakeholder groups as well, so they can see, oh, yeah, this is what we talked about at the beginning, it's great to see that in there.
Yes, and Aaron, I think the other point is that design and create won't see the final product if we don't do something like that.
Yeah.
Right.
That's one, but to your point, the way we did the previous plan, we also, for lack of better words, floated out there-
Yes.
-with stakeholders-
Yes.
-and make sure that-
Right.
-that there was some communication ahead of time, and it's not like trying to understand it.
Right.
But anyway, I think those two were important.
Yeah.
The other thing that, that we like to do, too, as we actually, once we are ready to take it to the board for approval, because there's, I'm not sure if Shannon got into it yet, but obviously the board has the authority to approve or reject a plan, right? Usually, and I say usually very loosely, I've never participated in a process, or board did it, and that's because they're involved in the process, like they're participants along the way. But we also usually ask design team members, members who actually participated, to actually share the components of the plan. So it's not something, because they get the chance, that we're facilitators, we, it's just really for them to actually showcase, like, this is what we did, and this was in response to that community input.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to do that in the board meeting, because I've been in the public, and, you know, then people that weren't also see, you know, that happening as well, so, yeah, that's great. I think we could use one of those two lead days, potentially, and potentially invite more people, make one of those two days, because we are on a, you know, we have a pretty precise time frame, that, that we could use one of those two lead team days, and make that kind of the final, everyone, you know, anyone that lives in the focus group or whatever can come in and-
I think so. It was, it was really worth it that time, because it energized them, and also tried to understand it before, it's like, hey, it's already adopted, so now we can, you know.
Yeah, that's great. Love it. Great suggestions. Any other questions or thoughts about process? Okay, very good. So really, I mentioned this earlier, but I think, I think especially because we have, you know, people that have been experiencing the process before, you know, the idea of this is setting, setting the, where you're going, then looking at the gap, and then redirecting resources. So I think this team, the Avengers, we're talking a little bit about this earlier, but a lot of this process, it is transformational, but it's also about creating efficiencies to where, oops, sorry, it's about creating efficiencies where everything's kind of aligned. And some of that, one of the things that I'll say that does happen, and I'm, I'm really focused on it in this process, and I think as a district, that it's going to be important for you to be focused on it, is some of what that means is stopping doing some things, right? To actually get aligned and get efficient, you have to stop doing some things. And sometimes people agree with that, but then when you really start talking about what that is, it's kind of like, uh, really? You know, wait, but not that, you know, no, we have, so that is part of the process, that's, you know, I think it's more important now maybe than ever, because there's so much that's kind of been added to the plate for educators over the past year and a half, and so people feel very overwhelmed. And so to actually, you know, I always like to joke and say, you know, to the board, like, so, you know, you want to do this new plan, where, you know, where's all the additional manpower that's going to put this in place, right? And so if you don't have additional manpower, then you have to reallocate, I mean, that's really what you have to do, you have to say, you know, not do this, I'm going to do this piece. So, you know, I love, I love the direction of the district, I think one of, one of my personal goals, just knowing the district during this process, is where can we, you know, how can we even get more elegant and efficient and focused, because I think that's going to be beneficial to everyone going forward, and so getting, you know, all of that alignment. And so that's, you know, there's, in, in most districts, I think, in education as a whole, because I've now been in education for 30 years, and worked in hundreds of districts, and in education as a whole, I feel like if there was one thing that I think could change that would make the biggest difference, is that instead of doing so much, and so many things, and so many different directions, that we would, you know, focus just on learner outcomes, and say, let's take all these random acts of good intention-
Yes.
-and focus our time, our human capital, and our, you know, our money, on exactly what we're trying to get done here. And it's, it's easier said than done, but I think that would be a great, for your third plan, you know, and, and going into 2021, I think, I mean, 21, 22, I think this will be a really good goal for you all to come out of this. And so to do that, we'll be very disciplined in the process about, you know, saying, what are we not going to do? You know, not just what are we going to do, what are we not going to do? And that's going to help you get to a place of transformation. So, okay, so we are going to essentially just spend a little bit of time in a focus group, essentially, this room being a focus group, go through some of the questions that we'll be sharing with the stakeholders, et cetera, and getting the feedback from you all, so you're going to, you're going to participate, just like you would if, like the other folks will. I'm going to do a little bit of a combination of, because remember I showed you, we're going to do summits, which are the kind of open forums, which is a little bit more kind of briny with the, with the summits, to help people just think about things in a little bit different way, and then there's the focus groups that are usually about 15 people that are all homogeneous in a room, and there's a little less briny, but, but the same questions, exactly the same questions. Same questions on the survey, same questions on the summit, same questions on the focus groups, and then all of that gets aggregated together to get to the design team. So, the first question that we ask, just to get people thinking forward, and it's really important that we, we try to make sure that we're raising the level of the dialogue, especially like you mentioned, Dr. Cavasi, there's a lot of tactical things, and a lot of things that people, you know, can get focused on, especially when you go kind of in open forums. So we, we want to raise the level of the dialogue to think about the future, et cetera. So the first thing that we actually ask the question is, what do you think is going to shape the future of education in the next 20 years? What are the things that are going to actually impact that? So in your teams, I'm going to give you, I'm going to look at some teams, again, if we're in a summit, we will actually have them do it in teams as well, whether that's virtual or in person. If it's virtual, we'll put them in breakout rooms and have them discuss this, if it's in person, we'll put them in teams and have them discuss it in person. So let's go ahead, timekeepers, let's, I mean, this won't take y'all very long, because you know, you all know the future, you can predict it.
Sure.
But I, let's just take four minutes to do this.
Do all eight?
No, 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 just the first.
Oh, okay.
Hey, I would do that, I would do that, you know, you might not.
So-
Just what will shape the future of education?
Can I say that?
Very significant.
So my, as she was saying that, I immediately remembered teacher technology and demographics. It was just popping in my head.
Which is the coolest.
Yeah.
Things like this.
I think, but I don't know what it's going to be more.
There's jobs that most diversity units have, but not-
That's right.
Education, it's always on it, but-
It's kind of a strange-
It's really, right?
Communication is the number one quality, like on the top of Forbes list, that's the number one quality that I've thought of before. And so I feel like, how are we going to, because technology, you know, it's, it's a must-have.
Virtual system.
It's beautiful, innovative, but it's, we, I, we, we, it's how we can, it's the team that are for your children. So to me, you know, we're both trying to think, but, you know, sometimes we're just like worried that they're kind of not institutionalized without, you know.
And that's here, the why is technology as part of the school and education.
Yeah, instead of-
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it also, as that technology is going to arrive, what we do, because it's going to, you know, we're going to have AI, and we're going to have not, all these determinants will be predetermined as far as the monsters, benchmarks, and how automatically a certain sub-pop of child is in a certain situation, here in Louisiana, in Japan, I just see all of that, and within the next 20 years, that's all going to be AI at our fingertips, and so how we steer them and lead them is less, based on-
I, I, I feel, I love technology. When you go back to the tier, my mind-
I was going to say the pandemic, this pandemic was basically what technology-
It's going to change everything. It's amazing. It's connected to people, ways of therapy, like before, it was, it's like, I love what he said about Chinese, too, like, when our kids change stuff, they have to be able to work in environments with people from all over, with different cultural links to that room, because it's important, because everything is pretty much a world perspective at this point, there's no more jobs that are, I mean, there's no, there's a lot of jobs that are isolated in your community, like in the city, or even in your own state, at this point, it's certain people, people who are being raised across the world, so I feel like those type of worlds are small, so it's going to really shift it.
The enrollment process, I just asked, they're not the same.
It's like all of just-
Yeah, so, I don't know, I- This is the part of the strategy, so this could be the education thing, we're already done it.
That's right.
Got it. Or they were-
These programs, and I was just saying-
I don't know, I forget the queue.
Yeah, that's the, because in the past, technology has, it's, it's really-
Okay, so, you can see how this conversation, so I'm going to kind of go back and work between immersion, and then just like explaining process, you can see how this conversation will help to elevate their conversation, right? When people start with people like this, and talk about this, it helps them to think differently, and that's how they're going to answer the, you know, that sets the frame for the rest of the questions, so that they don't, you know- so that they don't, you know, end up fixating on certain other kinds of things that really aren't, because we can reset the process. So that's, that's where we start with this. The, and then what we'll do is when we're in the summit situation, whether it's virtual or in person, we'll do essentially a small group like this, and then we'll actually ask some folks to share out. So we'll hear from different people. And then we'll be collecting the data, we'll actually also have a, essentially a texting function where they can text in answers as well to each of the questions. And then the last thing is we'll have this comment card. So you, in the focus group, in your folder right now, you have this comment card. So if you want to write your answers and contribute those, all of those get essentially aggregated as well as the texted, the verbal, et cetera. So we're essentially collecting data in a lot of different ways, whatever ways people are comfortable with, and aggregating all that data. This one is just a, it's a starter question to get people thinking differently. It's not necessarily something that shapes the design team, but it sets the stage for the next few questions we're going to ask. So then the next thing I like to ask always in the, in the summit is, what are your highest hopes for kids? But before I ask that question, I'd like to say, do you mind sharing with your team some pictures of school-aged children that you know and love? So do you have any school-aged kids? This can be your children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, friends, whatever. But will you please share pictures of them with your team? And tell who they are, and, so, go ahead.
This one's. Obviously not. And he acts like we do. This is making me more sick. He, Henry is not school age, but. No, he's kindergarten, so. Okay, now we're gonna see. So exciting.
He's actually studying physiology.
Wow, that's awesome. Yeah. And he will spin. My best friend.
My favorite part.
His son needs a freshman.
Freshman. Y'all get the picture?
She was mad because Dad showed up.
I'm like, I have some, right? Actually, no, you know, there was a parent.
But there's a decent.
Yeah, no, that would be eleven.
All right, Keshawn. This is JB.
We, of course, we came like, got on the train, like, so. I felt like somebody else, I feel like, I feel like two times a kid. And then the big one, like.
Yeah. And then you can't imagine life.
Exactly.
Oh, that's so sweet. Can we do patches?
The first one, I was so scared. Gosh, we didn't watch the car, and then I was putting him in the car seat during the.
And the whole time driving home.
This situation with. And we knew she was going to have a sibling.
Those are gorgeous.
Parents are always like, oh, it's going to be so great. And her, her immediate reaction was, no. She was three, two and a half. He was like, why would I?
Okay. So I love to do this because what we, what we do next is we basically say, we're going to ask a lot of questions and talk about what we want to do for kids. And it's really important that this is not just this, you know, intangible kind of conceptual idea. You actually can think about the kids you were just talking about, that you know, that you love, that you shared the pictures of, and think about these questions in those terms. And so the first one is, what are your highest hopes for your students as a result of their time at school? So, you know, this is where I like to talk about, they're going to think, they spend about 16,000 hours of their life in, you know, school and homework, in K-12. And thinking about the children that you just talked about, what, what, what should they get back for that? What are you, what are you hoping that they get the return on basically all of the best time of their youth? What should they get back for that? So that's the first question, is what are your highest hopes? And having them answer that question. So what I would like for y'all to do is you have, again, paper or digital or however you want to do it, one minute individually to think about that, and then a couple minutes as a team to discuss, and, and then I'll explain how we're using the process. So one minute individually, I'll keep time on that. One minute individually to think about it, and then. You can just write on the paper if you want, that's in your folders, or you don't have to record.
We just don't have editing.
Yeah, I'll just say the same thing to you, I can.
Okay.
Yeah, just for a minute.
Say it again? I know, I'm asking. Actually, y'all have it, so I'm not sure. I just changed it. You guys refresh, it should, you should be able to edit. Just picture your initials or names, like, may I? Everybody's definitely editing the same copy.
No, we are. Try making a copy.
Well, we can color for the.
Yeah, at least make a copy for your team.
Read a lot of individual, highest hopes. And it's interesting looking at it, it's like, it's all specifically academic, but it's kind of critical thinking, self-advocating, challenge on science. Respect only us. And then happiness.
We have to. Okay, so you're sharing in your team now, your ideas around your highest hopes. Is this what we're sharing? With each other? Yeah, in your small team.
Oh, small team.
Yeah, yeah, in your small teams, from your individual to your small team.
Self-advocating.
Self-advocating.
So, yeah, just take what you did individually and share with your small team. We'll take a couple minutes.
I like what you said. That's really, yeah. Because I was thinking in my mind, like, the highest hope I have of my. Experience is, or, 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 in life, you know, when I ask questions, they have a lot of that. That's why I really think that's cool. We're paper and these things, but it's more about what it all, that's for the. Because I'm not, I'm probably like you guys, like, I don't, I'm not a mentor. I want them to fail themselves, but I don't care, you know, if they have this high power to.
That's, yes. We'll combine you to, 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 but, um, that, no, that they accelerate their progress to their, to their aspirations as well.
But you describe. Okay. And so again, in the, in the focus group and the summit, in the survey, we'll ask two questions. In the survey, there will be seven different answer choices that people can choose from to get some. In the design team, this will come to us again, so. We're getting this skip over. So then the next topic is just how has technology. And again, we'll have, we'll have people able to talk about this and how it can impact these, essentially, these different areas. There's always so many fascinating things that come from the audience when we ask these questions. We'll ask them, how's it changed economics, how's it changed education, how's it changed communication medicine? And there's always fascinating things that people know, that they share, which is great. And we'll share a few of, you know, some of the unusual things that are happening. And then there's a video, but again, we won't show this tonight, we'll show it in the summit. But the idea of all of this is just to help people think through, you know, how, if, if this, if school, if education is again about helping prepare people for college, career, and citizens in general, then what does that look like in the current context? Especially the work environment, what does that actually look like? Just making sure that we're thinking through that, as before making those decisions. So like, I like to ask this question too, in the summit. What does this look like to you?
Stress.
Yeah, it's like, it's like, it looks like NASA or something, right? This is a, this is a, yeah, this is a, this is a trucking industry, basically like, what's it called?
Logistics.
Yeah.
Like the logistics.
Yeah, the logistics, yeah, so, uh, this is.
Looks like RSS.
I was just fixing to say that.
Looks like RSS, maybe.
Yeah.
Logistics.
Yeah. This is, this is kind of an ode to the GPS team, because like, in the age of GPS, right? Like all this data that they're collecting and utilizing, et cetera. So essentially then, again, sharing this information about how technology has changed careers, just to kind of set the stage. And there are some interesting stats on here, I think one of the most interesting, if you know millennials, you will, you will have heard this, but most millennials think they will work for themselves. They think they're going to be entrepreneurs. And they, and a lot of them already are, even at young ages, a lot of them start businesses. So there's a whole skill set involved in being an entrepreneur, right? It's a whole different thing than working in a, you know, a situation where you have a, you know, a manager, right? You have to have a whole different skill set. So it was just interesting to think about the way that, again, the workforce has changed. I, I don't like this stat, but it's true, it's a fact, that 52% of college graduates still underemployed. So, you know, what's, what's going on with that? And we'll share, you know, and, and I'm sure y'all have heard about, you know, that the average graduate today will change jobs 10 to 15 times, and I've heard the stuff that they'll change careers three to five times in their lifetime. It's a very different kind of working world, you know, than what kind of we all grew up in. So that's a little bit, and then, so I'm, I'm sure that you guys have seen a lot of this before, but we do like to share some of this with the summit group. And it's, it's crazy that some of these, like, you know, podcast producer, by the way, that's what my son's going to deal with, a degree from University of Texas now. So, yay, awesome.
You had your daughter from the University of Texas degree.
Oh, yes, I knew, I knew, I should bring that up in this room, that's like, I forgot. Did I mention that my daughter graduated from Texas?
There you go.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, there you go. So, but then, you know, like Instagram influencer and YouTuber, like, those are real jobs, like, people are.
And kids want to be those.
Yes, most kids want to be these things, right? That's what I'm thinking. So app developer, you know, and ride share driver, I mean, all that, you know, I mean, a lot of people now are also, I mean, I know people that are making a lot of money doing just driving, you know? And so anyway, these are jobs that are created in the last five years that did not exist before, and they're here now, so who knows what else is going to. So, all that to say, and we'll spend a little bit more time on it in the summit, but how can we ensure that they're ready to do these things? You know, to be able to compete and collaborate in this global economy successfully, to be a productive citizen, you know, to work remotely, right? Because a lot of, now, a lot of jobs, because of the last 18 months, have gone remote. And having, having been in a, you know, a virtual company and run that for 10 years, I can say there's a lot of different skills also to be able to work remotely and be productive. So these are, these are the things that we think through. And then getting to the question, what skills do they need to thrive in today's context? Including all the things that we talked about. And there are a lot of studies, and I think you guys have seen most of this, on what, what those skills are. But if you, we'll, we'll share, again, these kind of top 10 skills lists. This is Forbes Top 10 Skills That Employers Most Want. This is National Association of Colleges and Employees Survey on the same topic, what are they looking for on candidates' resumes? I like this quote by Rick Stevens, that there's just not, not one thing or skill, but it's, he says, this is why we fire people, it's the soft skills. So if they can't interact and communicate with others, behave ethically, et cetera. So it's, you know, it's not just academic talent, it's not just having a 4.0, right? There's other things that go with it that are really important. So that kind of all leads us to this next question, which is on your paper. And you can write briefly and then, and then share with each other, what are the most important skills for all students to possess in order to be successful? And you, because you have a, a goal for 100%, this is not just, what does the top 10% need to have? This is not just, you know, what do certain students need to have? This is, what do all students need to have to be able to be successful, college, career, and productive citizen? So let's take three minutes on this one. And you can do individual first, if you want to jot some things down, and then share with your, what you're.
Do individual, just.
Yeah.
And normalizing, I think we should.
Yes, persistence, absolutely.
It took, I did technology. Yes.
Problem solver.
Yes. Skills for all students.
We talk a lot about. It's really basically soft skills. Our suspects are really.
Right, right. It takes a lot of, a lot of confidence.
Right, like.
To be self-aware.
Yeah.
Even adults would not evaluate themselves.
Oh, right, they wouldn't.
Right, right, exactly.
That's one of the questions that we're trying to answer is how do we know? If that's our goal? And how do we actually figure out whether they probably say, put those things. One idea we landed on, I thought of, and I'll be giving aside part, but it's just a curiosity, what does not solve a problem, like it's described as self recording? So then many two questions around those soft skills into it, does he evade self recording as they contribute like.
Yeah, why not? I mean, why not? I think that's.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely, I think that's.
And do the teachers say so?
Yeah.
Are they good new work?
Yeah.
That's why I should thank, thank.
Yeah, we have talked about using a keyboard.
That's almost a given. So I think. Now, can we.
Yes.
Right.
Take great ideas.
Our parents were great at.
Yeah, versus our generation. With the Y and everybody that's a trophy. Hold on.
Because there's so much information.
So what you say, Tony, right?
The only thing that I didn't hear that I added was. That's, and yeah, early point of that is about to. All this is one part of it.
Right.
All this is.
And that part gets tricky. I totally agree with you, Sarah. I think it's because people are.
That's right.
It gets crazy, right?
Does it, the end justify some means?
Right.
That's right.
But how do you justify it? I know I hate to say that or that, but you want them to.
But you just. But everybody added, everybody added.
Um.
Yeah.
That's the interesting thing too, unfortunately, today. That's the, but those kind of topics.
Yeah. Do you think some of this can, it kind of signifies, can be worked into more like projects? So instead of this algebra, they, yeah, the, the teaks to cover, a little bit of algebra, turn that into a project. Then there's a world solution, or find the solution.
So that's your one specific way of doing like. Don't increase basic learning, like you. Our number framework has it set up to someone to do something like that, you know, want to use some course or ultimate project base, but ideally you'd like. Start hearing with a problem or question.
Yes, that's right.
Answer. I really wanna collaborate the high level, which is where it's, it takes a really good team. And I notice, so you can get a team of teachers that are doing different. Who collect people. So that the teacher's having one experience to all of it. It's got like.
That's what I said, our strategy in this room, the whole cross break.
If you go to another place with like students, they're getting out of the English as well. It's not like that.
Well, and that's what I think, I got that from us, or that's been in us, or that's why I'm always pushing to him, I want months, like three K. His first year's process goes in, it's all global, it's all, here's, here's potential issues out there. And yeah, we combine all of it, his kids, his kids, his presentations on their own, for this big.
We need a lot of things about high tech, high tech and health more, yeah. So about three years.
She came over.
I'm kidding, actually.
About three, before we launched active learning. Or even. Have an interview, get any shadow kits on there. Top self that reply. But after we did that whole thing and they launched the brain work, um, type, where they're in the year, yeah, all the principals come in.
Wow.
Yeah, it would be.
And I saw.
Year one. All the. High tech highs, the movie documentary on high tech highs.
But it's, it was a.
It was really cool, and it's all about this idea where it's like, it's a part of, basically it's a subject of like. But it's like. It's not the one, every standard, every system, it's not our goal. So the kids actually generate learning based on problems, start with the practice in one field. And it's just. And persistent, we self. To finish it, you self committed to this piece. It's, it's, it's cool.
Okay, I hear, I hear that you all have really kind of moved to this next concept.
I don't need to know later in life.
So I know, I know that you all have kind of moved to this next concept, which is the logical next conversation, which is, if this is the skill that they need. Then what is the experience they need to have in a day to be able to generate those skills, right? To be able to acquire those skills? So we can't say, oh, they need all these skills, like problem solving and all these things that y'all were saying, and then, oh, go listen to someone for eight hours all day long. That, that, those two things don't go together, because where, when are they gonna acquire those skills? School takes the majority of their time, so it has to be the experience that they have in school that allows them to acquire those skills or, or give them the opportunity. So that's the next question, which I, I think you were all already discussing. And what I wanted to bring to your attention is, um, you do have a learner profile. And you have a learner experience, again, that, you know, we talked about, that has, has been designed with this concept in mind, again, aligned with the goal, et cetera. So this information will be shared also with the design team. Um, this is, this is the, the learner profile skills over here on, um. And, uh, the active learning cycle, which allows for these different types of learner experiences that can allow. It was literally built from the idea of what are the skills and what is the experience need to be. Um, but you can see how this conversation can get very rich, um, and can help people to think through, um, strategy then, from this point of like, what, what needs to happen next. So the idea of the, of the learner experience, getting to the next step, which is, if these are the skills the kids need, and this is the learner experience that kids need. What skills do teachers need to be able to facilitate this type of experience? Because we can have the vision for the experience, but then we also have to make sure that we provide and equip the educators to be able to do that. So, let's take a couple more minutes on that. Again, you have the individual, um, Mitzi actually just made you individual digital copies too. So again, if you wanna report on those digital copies, those will actually be taken and aggregated as part of the information, to share back, so you can use. Oh, those are missing folders?
They are.
Okay. Um, and, or you can write, and or you can talk about it. So, go on this topic.
So, yeah, I guess like you're in segue to what we were just talking about, so I wanted to ask you. Uh, it should be said, no, I think they, they're a very talented group, a cohort of teams. Project, these type of things. So I look at that, it's two things, one, the way teachers are being taught and getting a teaching degree. It's nothing to do with what we're talking about. Maybe there's little elements of it, but it's still like, okay, here's teaching, and maybe you're good in math, and it's after focused, yeah, this is what you do. Here's the teaks, et cetera, et cetera. So, I guess my question is, is, besides fixing higher head and teacher development when they're in our system? Do you think it's, is it possible to do, is it available in a middle or a example? Uh, trial, uh, private, uh, demonstrations project, school? How can you, is that, or is that not the answer?
I don't think it's an answer, I think you're elevating the reason why we're self.
You're more of a coach.
The twelve best practices approaching, because you actually, you actually implement the best practices in your class, the way that it actually designs, the way the group actually says. Will be doing what you're.
And the coaches are truly.
If they're coaching around, so like, if you were to look at the, which are all the best practices, if you go through all, exactly the factors that the teacher would be doing? What you would be similar to, if you're resulting, already getting out of the way, installing the room, and doing it around problems, and. That's what you would actually see happening. So work headed there, the reason I said it's, your part is a little more tricky, is because, um, that. What would be really ideal is not having a teacher that teaches math, create that experience in the math content area by itself, right? Really cool, except I'm a high school teacher, I have an English teacher, a math teacher, just put together. And Stephen is gonna be, and they're, and they're A D B, they have pretty poor periods, but their English study are all designed elaborately. In my science class, I'm actually talking to learning about something that actually kind of you look at, once you start math, things like that. Um, that's a, that's a little more challenging. If you're a self-centered teacher, and I must say, in high school, I was an English teacher, I can do all these, just reading content for English. Ideally, what I would do is say, hey, Allison and my kids are gonna go to biology, Al, and everything, these things, and I could work with those things. In elementary, if you're a self-centered teacher, you would naturally do it. Sure. It is the, in elementary, for example, it's actually easier to create units of study that way, because they're not quite a kid, individualized experiences, so that's desperate. For, for math and for reading and writing, they just say, we're gonna support, you have a market, you know, for the elementary.
Yeah.
And you're gonna have all these things integrated all, all kind of in a graph, right? So like, people think like, oh, if I'm, if I'm in elementary, she was good next time. And I have to keep writing. And they're gonna write me something, why do I have to system write them if they're writing, not like, if you could be talking about a concept in social studies or science, they could be writing me a composition about that. I've still got all my science, my science text, all my writing text, all my reading, and take grades, or take grades on one assignment. You know? So it's basically teaching people how to do that, the best practice. If they're coached, just like you said, and, and implemented.
The best thing is that we're actually teaching them.
You're gonna get a really good score, you're describing, but it's timed, and, um, it's hard, it's hard to, you know, you know better.
Well, I have things, we have staff that. Because like.
But I think.
Aren't these guys, they have, and now more, back then, obviously, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty. Whereas. I would. So she, she's at all. And I realized, oh my gosh, like, well, and that's what I wanted to do, that's what I. But it made me count my blood counts, who's stealing? Because if you're really coached, like, you're kind of holding. Constantly reflecting on your practice, it's not my job to know, we do that, I'm constantly.
Well, you have. I believe we are in all.
Right, right, you just. And to have a coach, and now more. We have a Russell.
And to me, that's the most important thing too, because it's like, if I'm a coach, to be honest, it's one coach, as a student, who coaches? Three days a week, full time, and they have like, say, one session per hour, six sessions a day. They can have a case load where every person gets five to seven touchpoints a year. Of those. So you can surprise them, and if you got one individual hit, they're let, if we let them do what their higher. If you don't feel the need for it, you let your coach, at least. Gosh, you could get so much done, and then sometimes you get high, you have a flyer picture.
Okay.
You get both of them.
So what do you think of next? Skills kids need, experience.
Thought you were being all like.
So, again, you're starting to think through some of these things as you're talking about it, because it's, it's all again built on itself. It's like, this is the end that we wanted, but we've gotta think through all the way down to the systems. And I think this one, especially, you know, and you'll notice, you know, just like we said with, um, you know, what are the skills that teachers need in order to prepare all learners for the future? Cause right now, probably teachers are preparing at least some for the future, right? But when you get to equity and you're saying all, then, you know, they might have to think about it different, and it's the same with systems, right? When you start thinking about systems, I mean, the system's working for some kids, for sure, right? There's some percent that are already meeting the goal, um, that I think this team was saying earlier, but when you, when the goal is one hundred percent, then you have to think about what systems do need to change. So this is, this particular question is what gets to the strategies piece, right? That we're talking about there, is gonna come on the front. But you have to frame it through those other pieces of where you wanna go, before you just say, what, what systems need to change, right? If we started with this question, there's a lot of opinions about that. But if you frame it in the context of, we're trying to get to this place where all learners have these skills, et cetera, then you get down to the systems, that should shape the conversation. So this is, um, the last question that we'll be doing this, uh, tomorrow. So let's take a couple of minutes, um, to, you know, your individual and small group, and then, um, we'll move on to the next.
I'm like, yes, 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 yes.
Based on our conversation.
Yeah, y'all already saved them.
Yeah, so it is, is possible. I mean, I think anything is possible, but do we have the, the fortitude aligned with the expectations, the standards, expectations, as far as policies that we have there?
I don't think red companies necessarily have to change all, I believe that, I think, yes, I fully think we can. I think there are some things that have to be tweaked, like from like, in my opinion, and I would love to hear your, you know, speculation to your teacher here, you know, because of my business, but I like.
Well, I, I was in my elementary school.
I do acknowledge that.
I was gonna say, take your view on the.
Yeah, and I was on.
It is, yeah, so, but I think like, for me, for. Very, really. It's very. You should be looking more for, like demonstration, master, and less about.
Goes back to that sort of thing.
Yeah, well, more about. Don't be afraid of. Well, God, if our reference is in the more custom, we get. The more comfortable you.
And you have a better sense about it, because you're really. The, the thing about being, you're just trying to, you have to know a lot, and so, like, still, you're actually.
Yeah.
Instead of, oh, I gave this assignment, like, one of the simple things we talk about now in education, is in your grade book, and this is a simple, simple thing. Instead of, let's give this assignment a grade book, what's the standard that the assignment was intended to measure? And then our. Cause then the parent's like, oh, but why are they giving you that grade? Hold this book, and that's.
It's easy.
That's what we do with our kids, um, this is a little bit tangential, but so, for giving, uh, structure. Of loss parents. Take out the trash. And that's two dollars.
Literally.
It's just what, it's just.
Why are we giving this assignment? We have a concentration on certain points. A deal, one improvement at the majority. Okay. That is, seventy-four. Triples, quadruple times. I mean, just like, that point, like.
I mean, just like that point, like. But I do, the weekend, it's, I think Ashley was trying to.
I don't know your opinion. Oh, I was just going to say, I know that.
So only just those kinds of things that you're.
For then this.
Yeah. And, you know, while third, fifth, and eighth grade teachers.
Okay, so six and years.
You don't want to let your child hike through it. You're right, you're right. For me, like I wanted to about assessments, or I was going to go think about more on the take assessments, things that are actually related to the progression. Instead of like, well, total, you know, filters. And it's behavior-based assessments without, you know, your project. With the rubric attached to it. Why can't that be my assessment or my demonstration? There's so many ways you could assess that.
And if it's successful, it's big.
Or do you think that you can actually put it in structure? Yeah, but then put that.
Yeah, and then be tracking if your kids are gaining the skills.
Was a big challenge.
And to me, those are the answers that people, like, um, right, so as a teacher, what kind of resource are there that I'll need?
Yeah.
For any young students and boy students.
And there are those things that are, but if you let students, all they, that's all. And so we can't follow along. It's a little focus. It's a shift in priorities.
And so, yeah, it's getting better, schools, and our students better play, or building new schools. The pay more, the more, and shift the goal and less about desks and rows and desks and clusters. It's like, you want to teach others to create a space, or whatever it is they're about to do. So make, so tables can be took apart, or they can work on the walls, like one hundred percent. You know, like I think therefore, the spaces that are created normally for children, they use to be.
They are.
And you need it to be that way.
Yeah.
Particularly, or the actual problem is, you know, the next five years. And we know that's what we're describing, is that's what we want.
That doesn't, we're already, we're already upon it. Remember like, when it comes to the, at least the learner framework, we're on this. So we're starting to talk. So, we're starting to learn things. So, if this is a, if you're, you're, you're only getting to know. And then, how do you onboard people? But to be real, to be real about it, it takes practice, 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 practice. So being teachers that have been doing this for three years, they become better and better and better. Because it's not.
Yeah, I mean.
You're leaving our conversations.
I know.
I think y'all are heading that direction.
It's affirming that the questions are the right ones, the right order, by the way, they told me that. So that, that conversation about systems is very exciting to think about. And sometimes it's also a little, you know, anxiety ridden, because we've had a lot of these systems that we currently have for a very long time in education. Um, and, yeah, too long. And, and, you know, there's, you know, who knows, something really exciting could come out of the process, right? When you put all these minds together and everyone's thinking through it, so you can see how these conversations can be very rich. And who knows what, you know, great things could come out of it, that people start to go, wait. I think, um, you know, now more than ever, one size fits all doesn't make any sense. And we all understand that now, but now more than ever, it's like, it's really important that we start to think about the systems, because if we keep the same systems, it is going to either, you know, it's going to hold people back, it's going to be barriers, et cetera. So, um, those are great conversations that you all were having about that. The la, I said this was the last question, I forgot, that we do have one other one, which is essentially, if you want to change all this, and you also have to think about how are you going to measure the change? Um, and so, um, that's the last one. So what I want to give you all a little time to do is, in the next, let's say, six minutes, um, you can talk about this question, also, take a minute to fill in your individual answers, because again, we're going to aggregate, we're pulling that data, so you can do that in your folder or, or on paper, either one. Um, and then, from your team, kind of summarize your conversation, because we haven't been sharing the whole group every time. You can kind of summarize your conversation across the questions and answers. And then we'll, uh, move to just wrapping up and finishing an overview of the process, okay? So three things you're doing, answering individually, kind of summarizing your conversation, and if you want to talk about this question as well.
Oh, I see, so we can't type unless there are.
Step one, by the way.
Project based, the different grades, rubrics, student surveys, like we talked about, like tagging that on to, you know.
I mean, it's like, well, maybe it's like.
Oh, this probably. But how would we measure school effectiveness?
Well, I think it's like, it's having measured schools, like, they're based on how it's already done.
Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because you have, you have kids walking out with these things in school.
That's right.
And then you have the other stuff working, or at least, you know, like, if that's again, right?
How would we measure that beyond student surveys?
Without self-report, he's not reporting, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Just to take interaction. Yeah, I think, uh, that's a question for.
Well, Natalie and I have talked about it, um, because that's one of my, because that's one of my. And he was like, I'm like, you have an endpoint that's too clear, how do I know whether it's actually happening? I'm sitting on a stage in Berchtesgaden, these kids are getting their home, and that, that paper was going. And we haven't found some concrete way to measure soft skills, because we could, you can't really go into a class and, and observe it and make a generalization, you can. It's like self-report, consider it on a curriculum. So it's like, I don't know, um, yeah, we just have to say, if you did a survey, self-report a survey, we thought, I'll even like, yes, refine it, but if you consider other ones, like. Remembering if there's a review, maybe it's a better, like.
Yeah, service.
At the end of the year, or when you say. No, like, I mean, into the year, a teacher could evaluate the rubric group.
So, yeah, it's kind of like a K two, three reports part system that we have in place now. And, you know, it's very similar, again, on the front of my back, Montessori, you can have some there. Right, they have for each grade level, uh, a big mix, uh, because they, I believe they have all of that artistic. It's, and it's a true conference with the parent, appears how it is. She's really brilliant at this.
To me, that would be an example of, it's a, you know, maybe you're. You're not letting someone to evaluate it, and then you refer it back, that would be, maybe that's the key, maybe one way of measures. Do this to yourself report, and the teacher sends home an AP year, and then a three-part that actually.
Teachers are really hard. All of these things.
Well, especially in its rubber case, because then they're looking at behaviors, and this, even except another. It's not going to be a science perspective.
So, why more partner, what else?
Uh, because you're.
I made their, they have their, y'all have your own copies? And I don't know if y'all, did y'all, did y'all see your own copy of the track, or did they want it? Something, and I don't know, unless you want to just.
No, I didn't agree. Is it a, is it a.
That's okay. I just thought y'all.
There's no reason why.
I used to drink coffee with it earlier on.
Set the bar.
What is on there? What is on there?
This is, um, Brennan.
Okay. Did y'all decide on something to share with the whole group? Just from maybe capturing your conversation or something.
Right, and, and that's never.
Okay, let's see, team.
For that question.
Pals, no, well, anything from this entire conversation, because we have a really good whole group. Yeah, it can be on this one or.
So we, one thing we reflected on was that for a way to measure effectiveness, that we don't, because it's not a standardized test, is the engagement that students have in their classrooms. For example, just one component, right? And so, you know, I was able to walk classrooms today at Algebra One classrooms in San Jose, with the principal and the dean, and highly, highly engaging in those four classrooms we walked, right? Different ways of, you know, presenting information, selfless groups, almost, you know, a small group. But that engagement was critical for their learning, and I was sharing with the group that, you know, one of the pals, thank you, um, one of the big, that a student will never get credit for, because it's not a standardized test, one of the students was helping another student.
Oh, wow.
And was very successful in helping that student grasp the concept. And, and I reflect that they're never going to get, that's a skill we want kids to have after, you know, the real world or whatever. And it's happening, yet we're not measuring it, we're not capturing, and that's a system change, right? We talked in the previous slide, what are some things that we need to change? Well, that young lady who was helping us, she was doing a great job, by the way, she taught some of the concepts, but it's never going to hit the radar of her performance, and it should if we value that after they get out of school. Just the things we reflect.
That's really great, and, and that's so true, because for a number of reasons. One, for her to know she has this skill, right? Because that can influence, you know, I mean, part of what school is about is to discover, you know, these things. And, and then for her to know, oh, this is something I'm good at, I mean, that might help her thinking about her career, or what, you know, any of those things. And then also, it's important to measure it, because then it's like, if there are small skills that kids need to thrive on, or, and they don't know that they don't have them, how are they going, you know, how are they going to get them? And then, and then you find out when you get fired, that you don't have it, and it's like, it's better to know. Ahead of time, you go like, oh, this is something I need, and here's a way to get it. So, yeah, that's great, that's a great way to pull it all together, also, with that anecdote, because, um, yeah, there are a lot of things that are happening that would be great to say. And then you can, if you start measuring it, you can say, well, here's bright spots, and here's a way, you know, these people can teach these people, and there's, you know, all this pieces, so, love it.
So if I could just add two little bits to that.
Because you're his pal.
Because he's my path.
Oh, you're a pal, yes.
But one of the programs that the district does offer that my sons had a chance to participate in was Avid. And part of the Avid program was teaching them to be leaders, teaching them how to engage. And it was very successful, and in my mind, I'm thinking, this is a skill set that so many people could use. So we have a system that's catering to a few for it, and they're seeing great, um, rewards out of doing it. So why wouldn't it be something you would span to be able to capture more students doing these same things? For the reason that you just stated.
That's great, that's great, and I think that actually relates to something y'all were talking about, like behavior, so do y'all want to share?
Yes. Yes, we're not trying to copycat you, pals. We are Avengers, so. We, we, we were talking, we just keep coming back to the question you asked about, what do we want our own children, you know? And that ties to what we want to measure when we think about school effectiveness. The tricky part is measuring that students assist, you know? And we were just talking about, we want our students to be adaptive, strong communicators, problem solvers, critical thinkers, empathetic. And then after thinking and pausing, Dr. Reich said happy, happy. And so, you know, this is also very important to being academically successful. And like, all those, you know, higher, employers want, with all of this funnels there. And so, the question we kind of left with, um, and for, the question we kind of capped off our conversation with was, how can we measure school effectiveness with those important pieces? And that's something a standardized, at least, I think we landed on, a standardized test can't necessarily give us that data.
Well, and y'all were talking about learner centered and the whole child and all those things earlier, and it's like, well, this is a piece, this is a slice of it. But it isn't the whole.
Yeah.
And those are things that are important to measure. What, what you me, you know, you usually value what you measure. So you have to, you have to measure what you value?
Right.
Because otherwise you'll just value what you measure. And, and so, we know, we know some things are being measured, but what are the other things that you can measure, so that, you know, to reflect about?
Yeah, and we know that our teachers value this, we know they're trying to develop character in our students. We, we, we've got great things going for us, but it was the measure that was, that was a tricky obstacle, yeah.
The other thing that I was thinking about this in our conversation is this idea of, if those are the endpoints that we actually are looking for, so meaning, we're sitting on the stage, we're watching kids graduate, they're getting the form of put in their hand, what does that actually mean to us? Um, and we, and we backtrack to the couple of other questions you asked, which were, what do they have to be doing every day to learn those things? It takes, in my opinion, um, it takes courage to be willing to alter the things that need to happen so that kids can actually have that experience every day, um, because it, that's not easy. You know, it's, we, we, we can continue with business as usual and hope those things happen, but we already know what happens when business stays the way it already is, because we're getting all that already. So like, if you're, if you're strategically trying to plan for a different outcome, and you've articulated something that, that we've decided is kind of challenging to actually measure, and we know there's something specific that has to be put in the ingredients to make that outcome even possible, it's, it's, it's actually having the courage to like, do that, that work, you know? And, and in my opinion, it does require courage, because it's, this, like you said earlier, education has been the way it's been for decades and decades, a century, you know? So to actually say, we're going to shift this gear a little bit, because our kids have a different future than the ones we're living in, to me, that's, that's, takes, you have to be willing to be a front runner.
Yes, you do. Because, why? Because a lot of people will hold on to that thing that's familiar, that thing that they know, because that's, that's what they know. And so then they'll get opposition, right? That's, that's why it takes courage.
Yeah, it's like, we, we say, I think you, you made the comment earlier, which was, kids are going to be inheriting jobs that we don't even know exist.
Right.
Well, then we have to like, do school differently, because we're planning them, now we're teaching how to do jobs that we already know about. That's not the kind of skill they need. So it just, to me, that's the thought that keeps running through my head, it's like, yeah, it's going to take some courage.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, this process helps to build the courage and coalition around it, you know? Because sometimes it also is the conversation that helps, you know, people understand why changes us, you know? I mean, change is always hard, and so things that you're familiar with, I mean, that's just the way we're, we're here. That's the way our brains are made, is to be efficient, you know, just keep doing the thing that we know I'm doing. So hopefully the conversation around that, you know, because like you said, I mean, you know, everyone values and wants. I think what we'll find in this conversation is that people do value the same thing, and maybe with the experiences of the past eighteen months, people also see the need for change more than ever to systems that, you know, they have held on to. So, you know, maybe the time is now.
Or the courage.
Yeah. From that coalition. Team G P S, can you please give us your cheer one more time?
T, G.
P.
S.
Great, okay, what is your, what would you like to share?
You know, listen, some of the same things we covered, we started talking about what are the skills teachers encounter in it? How are we adapting our teachers' training, how are we here to train, and how we're getting to that? It's hard to say, but, you know, we kind of think back to like, where librarians were ten years, fifteen years ago, it's totally different. So are we adapting our teachers going to that stage, um, to give to that, to knowing that they're going to be working more on personalized learning? Um, and I won't say, I'm gay or man, but, well, you know, we've talked about assessment, teachers assess more than they ever used to, um, in those days. So how are we, in keen state, making their assessments today, instead of, you know, mentioning, do we have the right pieces in place for them to make it as simple and easy as possible? You know, the last thing, as a leadership team, we can tolerate it somewhat, you know, our job should be take away roadblocks. So, we, we started going a little bit of that path, where we're trying to go.
I love that, because that is, you know, that's like the last frontier, if you will, right? It's like you can have the vision and all those things, but like you said, to make it happen, because a teacher's job is astronomically difficult already, there's so many challenges, so as leaders, how do you take away roadblocks? How do you, you know, shape the path in a way that makes it easier to do? Remove the friction, yeah, that's, that's really, really good question to challenge yourselves as leaders with, I love that, yeah. Yeah, that's great. Very good, so, um, great conversations tonight. You get a feel for what, you know, what the conversation will be through the process, and then we'll, we're also going to make it very actionable. So there, you know, we, we aren't putting down the strategies to not even writing plan, like you said, um, of course, because we're inviting people into the process. And you can imagine, we exponentially increase the, the input, and then we're going to get these, you know, mind-blowing ideas that are going to be, um, that are going to shape the future of the district, so, um, and we'll have an actionable product from that. So that's really, um, tonight, yes. Um, these are the dates again, um, and we'll see what's, what's coming up. If you will, with your little comment cards, if you wrote it out, just give it to Dr. Wirths. We'll get it from him. Um, if you did it digitally, then it's already in the folder, we'll, we'll grab those and aggregate those, and, um, enjoy spending the evening with you, it was a great conversation.
No, any, any questions?
Or, yeah, other questions about the process.
From the board or anyone else about?
Or, or these are consolation prizes we can take.
Not until December the ninth.
December ninth.
December ninth.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
No other questions?
Do you have anything else? Dr. Rush, how is it?
Seven forty-six.
Um, it is seven forty-six, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.